John Wertz here. We are here with John Champagne, Jr., and he is running for position three on the Montgomery County City Council at 6:00 p.m. Monday, March 22nd. John, as we just discussed, if you'd like to get things started, just give us up to about a five-minute overview of who you are and why you're running for this particular office. And thank you for coming down.
I'm originally from Louisiana. You'll pick that up as I keep talking. I got here as soon as I could. Actually, I had a chance to get here in 1978, but I moved here with oil and gas in 2000. Went to school in Louisiana. Been in oil and gas probably forty years. And like most of us, I complained about what was going on in government. So eleven years ago, I decided it's easy to complain, but I should do something about it. So I ran for position one in Montgomery, in one. I served five terms. Last April, I wasn't running again. So for position two, did I say one? It should've been two. And so I, they were gonna, we were gonna serve till November, so I resigned in April and recruited someone I thought would do a good job. And he did, but he didn't want to stay. So, fast forward, I was approached by a number of citizens and asked to run again. I had no plans on running, but I said I would one more time. So my, my passion is for, for things to be run in a common sense, traditional way. Thank God, we live in a state that I believe is head and shoulders above the rest of the country in terms of the way it's governed and the way people look at life. My desire is to maintain what Texas has instituted, what the people of Texas, the majority of the people of Texas have desired to be governed by and to live a certain way. And I think we're gonna lose it if we're not vigilant and continue to keep what we've got and improve what we've got. And that's basically it. I have six children, fifteen grandchildren, and a wife of thirty-three years. I'm blessed, dude.
Awesome. Awesome. Good deal. Well, thank you for that overview. Thanks again for coming down.
John.
Yeah. We're gonna go around.
You didn't introduce, you didn't do interviews.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. With me is David Smith, Billy Graff, thank you, Pat, Bob Bagley, Del Fess, and then Pat Tibbs and Dennis Tibbs. So thank you, everybody, for being here. You mentioned three most pressing issues in Montgomery and your preferred solution to each. You'd mentioned that review the spending trends and redirecting essential services towards like water, sewer, streets, walkways. Are those big problems right now?
They're gonna be. There's a lot of growth in the city. And as you all know, the essential services of a city is not complex. It's when we get into all these other things that really is not the mandate nor the reason government is here. That being said, for instance, and listen, I don't, I don't have the context of what's going on, but I'm gonna give one example. When I left, we were looking at four acres that the school board had that they had abandoned. They, they closed the elementary school. And it looked like it would be a good acquisition for the city to use for weekend fare type, where people come to sell and, you know, it's a weekend. We have a lot of what you'd call crafts and specialty booths that come on first Saturday of the.
Like a farmer's market.
Yeah. So these four acres would probably be very good for that. That being said, we authorized the city administrator to offer $400,000. Next thing I know, they bought it for $750,000 with the, and again, it's a good piece of property, and I'm not here to throw daggers at any, anyone, but my big problem with the whole thing is that I'm hearing they wanna have the city administration and the courthouse, courthouse, the city hall moved there. We're talking about a huge expenditure. We have things available to us to circumvent that big expense. We need a water tower. There are times we don't have the pressure necessary to fight fires. We don't have the static pressure necessary. We do, but we could, we could be in a bind if things got, if we had a freeze set. So my only point in saying what I said is, in the list of priorities, a city hall, a new city hall would be way down on the list. Government has a tendency, like any organism, to look inside and to grow. My, my desire is to keep government as small as it can be, as efficient as it can be, and as cost-effective as it can be.
All right. Thank you, sir. David.
Mine's, mine's on the side.
One of those buttons. There's only mine left.
It doesn't freeze here in Texas, though.
No, no.
So last legislative session, they, they passed the anti-annexation. Well, we have to have a vote now, the citizens. The annex areas, you have big water and sewage issues to pay for that. So how do you see the, the expansion of a government city occurring with those two aspects playing against each other?
Well, to annex, for the sake of annexation, I'm not, I'm not an advocate of it. If it makes sense to bring services to the adjoining areas and there is a, an economic, an economical way to do it, where we're not in a deficit position to do that, then fine. But I am not a proponent of growing a city for the sake of growing a city without some type of, Montgomery has, has a bit of an ambiance. That's why people move there. It's, it has a bit of a small-town air to it, it has a historical flavor to it, and it's, the topography is quite nice. So there's a balance between growth and maintain what people have moved there for to begin with. So, no, I would, we've had opportunities to annex, and when I was on council, and didn't do it, it didn't make sense. So when it makes sense, I would vote for it.
Yeah, I actually have a son and daughter-in-law who own a business there in Montgomery County.
Down in Montgomery.
In the city? Yeah, right there on, right there on the kind of little main street area right in there, Old Town.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. And a little yarn shop. And so they love it down there. They think it's great. Their concern is that as Montgomery grows, really, it alludes a lot to what you were talking about. How do you maintain that, that ambiance of Montgomery, but at the same time have a robust economic condition where the families, they grow, they come, they can participate in the city, but the city, the city doesn't lose that piece of it?
It's, it's a trick. I mean, it's, they're, they're, I am not anti-growth.
Right.
I am what I would hope to be smart growth, whatever that means. That being said, I, you know, a lot of the hill country towns have pulled this up to some, to a great degree. And, excuse me, there was, there was this belief, we wanted to draw in industry. They have four square miles. What kind of industry you gotta draw in four square miles? It's a bedroom community. That's what it is. So provide this, and the demographic is quite good, because the people with money are the people that, that were, were drawing to the city, a bedroom community, a retirement community to some degree, and a place to raise a family. There's a balance. Retail, I think, needs to be there, and it is growing, but to make Montgomery a replica of 1960, I think would be full on. So the trick is to, to maintain what you alluded to, to control. Zoning is very important.
Yeah.
And you can do that, I'll give you an example. The whole council was surprised just a few weeks ago because apartments were coming up. Well, what is this? We didn't realize apartments were coming up. It was multifamily, but we didn't want apartments. Well, when you zone it a certain way, you can't pick and choose what goes in there, but you can control it with architectural restrictions and make it more appealing. And I would say zone certain areas prior to someone buying the property, and you're okay. They got, they were blindsided by it. Now, I'll say this, I'm not against apartments, but again, there's a balance. There's a balance between single-family homes and apartments. I believe ownership plays a, I think your questionnaire alluded to, people owning their own homes facilitate good family environments and, you know, again, balance.
So you, you mentioned right off the bat about, maybe I took it the wrong way, but people are wanting more amenities that are moving into the area, and the city's now having to, to think about that. The strongest point, most important one that you, that you do is providing water and then making sure the law enforcement is, is there.
You got it.
Those, those are the two biggies that you're mandated for.
You got it.
You're not mandated to build, you know, sidewalks or put up streetlights or, or any of the other things. So as we see people coming from other states, coming into our, our county and Montgomery particularly, and the city, I think all of us are seeing these people that have paid higher taxes and had all these things are coming here now and wanting all these amenities and dog parks and bicycle trails and all this stuff. How can you continue with the, the budget that you currently have without raising taxes to be able to provide amenities without, without lowering the services of law enforcement and other things?
Well, I can promise you, if I'm on the council, I will never vote to circumvent or usurp the primary roles of, of city government, which is what you alluded to, protection, water and sewer, road repairs and improvements, and sidewalks. We have, our roads are deplorable. They're, they're small. It wasn't, wasn't a whole lot of planning. It was, it was a rural town, never, never anticipated this type of growth. So my last budget meeting, there was nothing in the budget, or little or nothing in the budget for roads. And I suggested and got $400,000 budgeted for, for roads, which, by the way, little was ever spent. I don't understand. And, and it, I don't wanna go off on a tangent, but the fact is, I think the amenities of the city are much more traditional in terms of Montgomery as opposed to, say, the Woodlands. Walking in, in the city with nice sidewalks and decent roads, in my opinion, with the demographic that I see being drawn to Montgomery would suffice. We don't need all the, the urban draws that you see in, in a lot of cities. That's not what we're about. And it might be if you get a different group in there, but I, I don't think that's it. That's not why people are moving to Montgomery. They wanna get away from a lot of this stuff. That's why I'm moving. And it's come. How do you control it? And, and I would say our police department, that's a whole nother deal, but we have an excellent police chief. We had an excellent police chief prior to this, by the grace of God, we got another. But our, our, when I, when I got involved eleven years ago, our police department wasn't near as professional as we have now, and they do an excellent job. And what's more important than protecting your citizens? You can't have commerce, you can't have anything unless you have civil water.
What's population of Montgomery?
About thirteen, fourteen hundred now. When I moved there, it was about four, five hundred.
Okay. Your ten years of prior experience on the council is good. I'm sure you've got, you seem to have a good vision, good grip on things that need to be done. Could you please list some of the major accomplishments that you were instrumental in, in those ten years, and what you saw as your biggest obstacle in accomplishing those things and in the upcoming two years?
That's too good of a question. I'll, I'll say this. The first motion I made as a councilman was to table and ultimately reject participation in the SJRA. So I just instinctively knew it wasn't the right thing to do. I'm not saying I have any special gift. I just know if I'm gonna hand over my ability to have water over to this huge bureaucracy, it's not gonna be good. And got a lot of kickback. Secondly was, the second place I looked was the police department. This is all being filmed, right?
Yes, sir.
The fact is, and this is a broad brush, but police departments can be more political than any, any political situation. I love the police, don't get me wrong, but they know how to work, work the game. And when you have good professionals, it's like, they're human beings. You know, people say, well, people are basically good. No. No, they're not. So that's why we have police departments. That's why we have lots in the building. So, you know, not to go off again on a tangent, I think pulling in the budget, actually, when I got elected, there was two other men. John Fox, who you may know, who I call, who I think of as a friend, recruited me. And when we went in, we had, we had a vision to get control of the budget and make Montgomery more of what we thought the people desired, and to be, to at least have a professional police department, which we did. Hired a good city administrator. And the second thing I think would be, we, we, we got the funds and set up a subcommittee to look at drilling a well. And that's when Lone Star Water Group was, was really coming down and, you know, all the restrictions. So we couldn't go to the Jasper, we had to go deeper. So when you go to the Catahoula, the chances are, the further south you go, the more salty it gets. So we did all the due diligence and the studies, and we drilled a well, and it's fine. So we're, we're secure in our water supply. Our sewer's gonna have to be updated soon because of the growth. I just, conservative principles, trying to keep my eye on the ball. The, the police protection, utilities, roads, it's not complicated. And I was against acquiring a whole lot of parks at first, but we acquired them. We have four of them. Fernland, Cedar Break, the two main parks, and they're beautiful. End memory park. It's absolutely beautiful. So there's a lot of attention and money that's, you know, directed in that, in that way. But it, it brings a quality of life to the city that I really, that I, that I changed my mind about, because it's, it's quite good. Once again, you have to monitor it and be prudent and a good steward of people's money.
Okay. Go back to that ISD acreage that you talked about. That, that was a purchase and not an annexation, right?
No, it was a purchase.
Yeah, okay. And you voted for $400,000?
Nope. I voted for the city administrator to offer $400,000, not to approve the purchase.
So did, did you learn something, or did the city learn something about how to control road governments? Because that's the incident that happens almost every day at every government level. They have authority to do something, they do twice as much. So how did that particular case end up and how would it be changed to keep, again? Anybody go to jail?
Well, I mean, I don't think they did anything illegal, right?
Was the purchase approved? I mean, you.
Oh, yeah. The council approved it. I wasn't there. I had resigned once that happened. Prior to me resigning, because my, my term was up, they, before I resigned, in executive session, the city administrator was given direction to offer $400,000 for four acres, which is, it's prime property, it's very good. I don't believe a city should be in the property business anyway. But, but secondly, to the point that I made, we thought the acquisition would help with parking and the events that we would have on weekends with a modest purchase. Well, it went to $750,000, and when I heard, and I'm not saying they're planning to do it, but this is what I'm hearing, that, that they wanna move city hall and all of the offices and personnel that are, that are involved with city hall to this four acre. We're talking about a huge cost. We have, we have a community center that's probably, I don't know, fifty, sixty years old, maybe, maybe more than that, I apologize, but it's, it's underutilized. I'd move the police department in there tomorrow and free up the entire city hall for admin. So.
Is that four acres near downtown?
It is. It's on Clepper Street.
Okay.
Right, right near the library. It's beautiful, bro.
So a couple questions on taxes and debt. I don't think you got around to, with the sales tax rate for the city is?
Eight point two five, right?
Okay. For the city?
Eight point five.
For the city?
No, the city's point four. That's bond. I apologize, I don't remember the split. It's like three, state gets three, I don't know.
They get six and a quarter.
So revenue-wise.
Revenue's good.
Do you know what the property tax rate is?
It's about two point four.
Okay. So what's?
Of that, the major, the biggest part of it is school.
Right, right. So how much of the revenue is drafted out from each? Is there one more revenue coming from?
Sales. Sales is a big move.
Okay.
The Krogers and a few others. We have not raised taxes in the city over the last eleven years.
Property tax or, or?
Nothing.
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
But appraisals have helped you.
That's right. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And, and I entertain lowering the tax rate. We've done some tax abatements for senior citizens, very modest. But now, I think there was a question, but I don't wanna get into it, so, about abatements. No, no one asked, it was on, it was on the questionnaire.
Did you start that or no?
It's, it's, okay, start it. This is how much you have.
We're in John's time.
This is John's time.
This is John's time.
Oh.
Well, John started.
Okay, so. On debt, that was another question. What is the city bond rating?
If I remember right, it was standard and poor was triple A M. It's, it's, it's very good.
Okay. Our current debt load, what is that? And is it too high?
No. Well, compared to other cities our size, it's, it's higher. Again, it's probably capital projects in the, probably in the neighborhood of eight million, maybe north of eight million. Our reserve, again, I apologize, was something in the neighborhood of one and a half million. We kept getting told by our auditors, that's too much, that's too much, you have to go down on your taxes. I don't know what's wrong with that. So the reserve, we're financially, we're in pretty good shape. There's no pension problems, nothing hanging out there, mostly capital projects that are necessary.
I see in one of your notes here, you have a statement, personal cost is another area of question. And I was just wondering, you know, most of the people who would vote for you vote in this election are probably not elected glories, they're probably average citizens who work in a, you know, private enterprise. And, you know, their, their retirement plan is defined contribution, whereas most of the government workers have a defined benefit, which, you know, if you have a very costly plan, so how do we, how do we get the government off the defined benefit pension plans and have a pension plan like every other citizen has?
Actually, we, we're constrained, if I remember correctly, by, by certain things that are in place by the state in regards to certain employees, I think. If you ever try terminating, terminating a city employee or a department head, pretty tough. And you can probably wait for an attorney to call you later. The point I'm getting at is, for whatever reason, government employees seem to be excluded from the day-to-day rigors and, and concerns of the private sector. They believe automatic cost of living raises should be, they got it this year. We just went through a pretty rough year. Everybody got a raise, from what I heard. I haven't been paying much attention, to be honest with you. It was, it was a break, nice break. But the, the fact is, I believe in giving compensation based on ability and merit, not seniority, nothing but your production and value to the city, just like my company. I pay people according to the value that they add to the, to the organization. And that's the way I looked at the city employees. We have an, when I left, the city secretary, the city administrator, the police chief, and the utility director are excellent. I'm not sure that the direction right now is, is the best it can be, but it's my opinion. I don't wanna get off. In terms of your point on, on retirements, it's, that has all been put in place. I'm not, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know how we could change that structure. It was my understanding that pretty much municipalities and the governing agencies are pretty much the same, although Houston, for example, is a horror story. We, we don't have those issues, but we do have some retirement benefits for our employees.
I mean, in essence, by what you said earlier, Montgomery, the city of Montgomery has raised the taxes of every citizen every year for the last ten years.
By?
Right, because you kept the money from the appraisal improvements.
Right.
So, so will you commit to the next budget to meeting the effective tax rate? So that you have to reduce?
You bet. You bet. Actually, I was, I, I, we had a discussion about that. Actually, I was, I, I don't, I, we had a discussion about that. I brought up not re, not reducing the tax rate. I had one other person that wanted to do it, but ultimately, and I don't even remember the vote, it didn't, it didn't pass. But I, I agree with you in principle. For whatever reason, governments hate giving up potential revenue. It's, it's, it's just.
I hate it personally, but.
We hate giving up personal revenue too, it's good.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm with you.
Well, I always like to ask this question because I, I am one. There's a lot of work that gets done through cities and counties, but we're focusing on cities right now, through nonprofits, a lot of times. And I run, I run a very substantial nonprofit, doing disaster relief work, hurricane work, so I learn. I mainly work with counties, but inadvertently I'll get with the cities too. One of the things that I find a lot of cities do is, they love to, some more than others, enjoy the opportunity to take tax dollars and pick and choose what nonprofits in the, in those communities are going to get funded. I personally am against funding nonprofits through city tax dollars personally. What types of nonprofits do you find your city supporting, and are you okay with that?
Well, to your point, if you, you review my answer, I believe I said it's not the function of government to do what you just alluded to.
Right.
Totally.
Right.
Nonprofits should be supported by private citizens.
Right.
Not the government. We, MEDC gives a certain support, monetary support to certain festivals that are nonprofit. That, that's kind of legacy. I'm, I'm not crazy about that, but the old guard would be, you know, that would be a tough thing to do.
Right.
I, I don't know quite how to collaborate on the fa, on that, other than, I'm totally against it.
Okay.
It's not, that's not.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm looking, I'm just, I'm looking for a, a perspective of it.
I hate it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not our job.
Right.
To pick winners and losers.
Okay. Makes sense.
So, with your thirteen hundred, wasn't it? Thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred population? And your, your footprint for the city, how many more people can come into that city without doing multifamily before?
That's a good, good question.
And, and in doing so, how are you going to look forward into the future for, for your water, your sewer, and your law enforcement?
Well, that, that's in place, there's a master plan in place. But to, to the specific point you made is that we have certain zoning restrictions in terms of lot sizes. The current trend that I've been exposed to, and I'm no expert, the developers that are prominent in our area cannot be profitable with our current lot sizes. So, there's variances. I can tell you right now, I wouldn't vote for another variance. Those days were over. The, the, there's beautiful property out there, and I do have some sympathy for, for the builders, you know. I know a builder that just his property tax annually is three hundred thousand dollars. That's just dead property sitting there, waiting. But that's not my, my job, is to protect his, his investments. That being said, I believe the city, when there is a development going, is going on, we should be in the customer service business every day. That's what a city's in, that's, that's the main function of a city, to give excellent customer service. We have stockholders that pay every year, that we report to, the, the board of directors, if you will, report to them, and they need to get the value of the money that they invest in this city, period. And, and developers are, you know, I hear all the time, I can't get this done, it's taking forever. There's no reason for that. The bureaucracy, even in a small city, is, is, is ridiculous.
Is it bureaucratic, just to be bureaucratic, or?
People are married to process, not results.
Do you know about approximate square miles of?
Four square miles.
Four square miles, that's the entire?
Plus and minus, yeah. Well, actually plus, because I, you've got a little.
So, how close are you to saturation?
Oh, I think there's ways to go, but I'd say probably the west side, sixty percent, sixty-five percent.
You're sixty-five percent complete?
To capacity?
To capacity?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're not, you're not looking, you're not looking at having a population of over five thousand for the city of Montgomery then?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be.
Unless you're annexed.
Yeah, and, and that would be a reason to annex.
Right.
So, forty thousand worth for your tar and coal?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm mulling over in my mind a couple of statements that I'm having trouble putting together. You said your financial position for the city is very good.
It is.
And you said the roads are very bad.
It is.
So, what key, how do you reconcile those two? Why are the roads bad when your financial position is good? And that probably ties back into my original question of, what obstacles have you run into that, the biggest obstacles you run into in getting things done?
No, getting, um.
A management.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, one of the things that I regret is sometimes I get overly passionate about a position. And I might act in a certain way that I'm, I'm embarrassed about afterwards. But I, I have pushed. You see, it's not, it's, it's, it's not sexy. See, roads aren't sexy. But spending ten thousand dollars on a goat costume, that's sexy. And that's what they're gonna do, that's what they, this is gonna draw people into our city. Here we go. So, my, my point is, I've, I've said, give me a priority list of the things that need to be done on these roads, and I'll get a list of priorities. I said, work, work it now. And for whatever reason, we're painting this, we're, we're pressure washing this, we're doing that. We have a great director of utilities, but I believe the overall direction and there have been infiltration of certain individuals in the council that felt it their, their prerogative to go in and influence individuals singularly. See, by myself, I'm nothing. Three votes, and I'm a lot. But for me to walk into that office as an individual and try to, you know, influence city administrator and this or that, and get things done, this is not right. And it was something that going on.
Police chief.
Yeah, but don't get me started. So, what a joke. But we, we have a high school environment right now. I don't, I don't wanna be crass or, or, you know, rude, but it's, 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 it's junior high right now. And there's not enough robust dialogue and enough people venting and expressing their opinions and getting to solutions. There's, there's, there's a monologue over there right now. It's not healthy. I don't want people to agree with me every time I say something. That's not the way it's supposed to be. We're supposed to influence each other and come to some, some decision that benefits the city. Not me, not your buddy, not, that's not how it works. I hope I answered your question, sometimes I just ramble.
Lot of that going on, even at the county level, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, my time, my time's up, yeah.
I'm sorry, I hope I answered.
So, you, four square mile, I think you said sixty-five percent is developed?
No, capacity, I think we're at sixty-five percent capacity in terms of population.
Okay.
Now, a lot of people, they're gonna watch this and go, you know what he's talking about, that's fine. It's absolutely fine.
How much undeveloped real estate is there?
Oh, there's, there's a ton.
Hundreds of acres?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But it may not be zoned for development though?
Yeah, I mean, every inch of land probably has some zones on it, doesn't it?
Yes.
But you can't change land that's already zoned and sold to for that, right?
And, and there's some legacy aspects to these zones. There's an, there's a developer that has certain, that has certain situations that are grandfathered in, so, you know, there, there are certain restrictions on it.
So, you, you can't build an apartment on a tiny lot? So, are you saying that there would not be any apartments built? Or that maybe these legacy developers are holding on to the land if they could build apartments on within the city limits?
I, I don't believe there's a whole lot of multifamily zoning left. Could be wrong. I'm, I'm trying to picture the map in my, in my head right now. But single family and commercial, there, there is some. The single family, there, there's a move to making duplexes and patio homes. And if done correctly with green space, it's nice, it can work. But that's, that's ownership, it's not revenues.
But you're not, you're not at risk of what's happened on fourteen eighty-eight, which is a huge apartment process, apartment projects going up?
Well, there's, there's a sizable one going up right now.
In, in the city?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And is that because some developer held on to it and?
That's because, well, if, if, again, the zoning is in place, but we can, we can go in and put architectural requirements and make it a very nice situation. We, we, we have some subsidized apartments for, they're subsidized. Based on income? Yeah, they came in early, that's six years ago, but they're well managed, they're beautiful, and they're, they're done quite well. But there's a point where the balance can shift, to, to your point, where apartments become the, the primary.
Why would a city subsidize the?
Not the city, the state. State, yeah.
Texas, yeah.
No, not the city.
Yeah, all right, good deal.
We got about five minutes left. So, you touched on abatements. I don't recall if you said, does the city have an abatement policy? And if so, do you support it? Is Kroger, Kroger's got a prime spot there. Did they get an abatement?
They did.
They were coming in, and how long is that?
Ten years, if I remember correctly, and that's, that's coming up. They were the first, they were the hub, if you will. And there was a lot of support from the community wanting Kroger in there. So, we, we gave them an abatement. We gave a small abatement, I'm sorry.
Remember how much?
I don't, but it was.
Was that a good deal?
Yes, it was, it was.
Was that a sales tax abatement or was that a property abatement?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yeah, but it's a marketplace, so there's a lot of commercial, there's a lot of taxable items being sold there. So, that was a requirement, it wasn't just grocery.
They're not abated?
What, no, well, they, the whole deal's abated, but there's, there's a lot of sales tax being generated there. Well, more than there would be if there wasn't there. And it was a small abatement given to another developer across the street, very modest. As far as I'm concerned, abatement's a rule, that's done.
Okay, and the, what did Kroger get with, what abatement? Was it a sales tax abatement? Okay, but yeah, there's sales tax being generated?
That's right.
Within?
It's a portion of the sales tax.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not all of it. And if I remember, it was ten years. And it'd been there five, six, I don't remember.
Okay, Dave?
I'm done.
I'm done.
I'm done.
Four's out. Four's out.
About three minutes.
Close the stadium?
Oh, yeah, still over there, closing stadium.
Okay.
So, all right.
Well, I just wanna thank you. Like, like most of these, these situations, like what you're doing, it's, it's thankless. Nobody knows for the most part. You're doing it because you're concerned citizens, and I, I personally appreciate it. I, I, I speak to my, my children all the time about this, I have five boys, one daughter. They haven't done a very good job in transferring what's important about this country and about our, our communities to our young people. I, I just think we're gonna lose the liberties and the freedoms that our fathers, our parents handed over to us, we enjoy. If, if we're not vigilant, if we don't get involved, that's, listen, there's no, there's not a long line behind me wanting this position. That's part of the problem. So, I, I spent a lot of time trying to recruit people. Why don't you serve for two years, you know? People I thought, but I, I tell people all the time, I can go find fifty people doing a better job than I can, but where are they? So, I guess in summation, I, I would hope that somehow we, we convey to the general population that elector, the need to get involved at some level. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, appreciate you having me, good luck.